...and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pecquell, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director Walton.
Here.
Chair Dr. Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nink.
Here.
Chair Stewart.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Fledge of Allegiance. Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/assembly. There are no comments to the board this evening. Item 4.1, information and outreach, is souped...
Souped?
Souped in the halls. And you have something to share with us?
Yes, thank you Chair Nathan and board members. As I know you know, I periodically have the opportunity to go out and chat with students about various subjects. We've never shown one at a board meeting, but in part because our agenda tonight is a little bit lighter, but in part because it is about a subject that this board spent a lot of time on, which was our new cellphone procedure. And so, we're going to take just a few moments if the technology works. I will just say, earlier today, I was meeting with our President of the Rochester Education Association, Vince Wagner, and we both agreed that for our generation, our favorite moment is some of the students' responses to how do you think parents used to get a hold of kids when they didn't have cellphones in school? So you have to watch for the reactions, because it's subtle of a few of the students, but that's my favorite moment. And I just have to say, the students at Mayo High School were absolutely fantastic, as they are in all of our schools. So, here's a little quick glimpse of our cellphone procedure after one month of school. So this year in Rochester Public Schools, we have banned cellphones, and we know that has not been the most popular thing with students. So I am here at Mayo High School, where I'm going to talk to some of the leaders of the student government about how they think it's gone this year. What was the first thing you thought when you heard there was going to be ban on cellphones this year? Just what came to your mind?
At first I was like, "Oh no, like, we're not doing that. I think that's stupid." For me, I think like right away, I was like, "God, this is so dumb," because like, so much is done online these days, like on our phone.
I was like, "It's not going to work, and it's not going to be any different from any other years," because cellphones have always been a no-no in schools, but they're always here.
To be honest, I was like, pretty freaked out, because I'm like, "What's it going to look like?" Because I know there's schools that have like the pouches that you have to put them in. I'm like, "Are they just going to take it away for the whole day?" put them in. I'm like, are they just going to take it away for the whole day? And it felt like kind of taking away from freedom that we already had, and was kind of going back into the past more as well.
Taking away your freedom. That's a, that's a, that's a big way to, big way to put it. No, I like it. So how has it actually gone with about one month of the school year done?
I mean, it's been, I thought it's gone pretty well. Like, honestly, having my phone away in classes kind of helped me make more connections with kids in my class as well. And I also just feel like I have done better in my classes, because I'm not distracted by my phone as much as well.
For me personally, I think it's going very well. Like, I think I've been able to like, take a, like, put my phone away and just like fully focus on school.
So far, I think it's been good. Like, I, I feel like we're more connected with our peers. Like, I feel like I've gotten to know people better this year, just because like, it doesn't mean that I just sit on my phone after class. Like, I talk to the people around me, which can be really nice. But also, sometimes when classes are done, and like after like, a math assignment, and you have nothing to do, it can be a little bit boring. I kind of miss listening to music in class, but overall, it's been okay.
I think it's honestly like been pretty good. I think it's definitely shown, I mean, at least me, me like, how much I actually rely on my phone, and how much of like a screenager I am. Because like, I just realized like, how much like, I like, want to reach for my phone throughout the day. But I think it's definitely like, kept me more engaged in my classes.
Um, I think like having a policy like actually made it work. I thought it wasn't going to work, but it did. Like, I feel like I don't see any phones in classrooms. And like, I don't know, it feels a lot more strict, which I like.
Well, last year when I was talking to some students here in Rochester about cellphone ban, a girl said, if you take my cellphone, it will be like cutting off my arm. Has having your cellphone put away been like, losing any body part to you? And if so, which body?
There's definitely been times where it's felt like, it's been like, it's been cutting off my arm a little bit. Because I'm like, oh, wait, I can grab my phone. I'm like, oh, I'm not supposed to have that right now.
I guess it would be like, cutting my hair. Like, it's something that like, I, I kind of was annoying at first. I wasn't really sure if I liked it or not. But like, it hasn't had that terrible of an impact so far.
I would say, it feels like I've lost my hand. Like, I just always go for my phone, I feel like. Like, the moment the teacher's done talking, like, the moment we're assigned something, like, oh, I need to check my phone. Like, what do I have going on? Google Classroom mode I have going on in this group chat for this club? And like, it's just a really bad habit. And I think this is like, good for us.
Like, honestly, like my mouth. Like, I don't know, it's like, it didn't feel like I was really losing it, but it was like, oh, like, I think of this, and I'm like, oh, I need to text my mom this. But then I'm like, wait, I can't use my phone. So I just have to like write it down, and like, remember it.
How do you think, when I was in high school, a zillion years ago, how do you think parents got information to their students during the school day if they needed to do that?
Yeah, I was thinking about that, like, how?
Maybe they called the school.
Yeah, yeah.
Genius.
Like, are there still landlines and stuff then, where they like called the secretary?
That's it?
Yeah, right there.
And you know what? It worked.
I think they just did it. Maybe through a teacher, like cellphone, or maybe they just didn't. I don't know.
Do you ever think of calling the office?
Yeah, maybe that.
Final question. How do you think parents got in touch with their students during the school day when they needed to talk to them before cellphones?
The office. Yeah. I remember when I was in kindergarten, I would like, go to the office to call my mom when I needed a ride. I'd miss the bus.
There you go. And it's, it worked fairly well, right?
Yeah, it did.
We've gotten some emails from parents, that are like, how will I get in touch with my kid? We're like, we have friendly office staff who will get your kindergartner or your junior. If you were superintendent, what would you have done about cellphones here in Rochester?
I mean, probably a similar thing, like, just making sure teachers are being proactive about the cellphone problem. Because I know in the past, there's been an issue where it's just like teachers feel like, no matter what they do, they can't make an impact within the cellphone policy. But especially this year, I know so many teachers who just are very open about, no phone, no phone. Like, if they see it. I know my chemistry teacher just like screams out violation every single time. And every time he does it, people put their phones away. So, I think it's been helpful to put it away now, at least.
Screams out violation.
Yes. Screams out and points violation every time.
That's, that's strong implementation right there.
I don't know, that's hard, because like, I feel like you have so much power as a superintendent, but like, there's also a lot of, like, room for like judgment, or like, people not agreeing with your opinion. So I don't know, I would definitely be very conflicted. But honestly, like, I don't really have anything negative to say about the policy. Like, I don't know if I would have changed it or kept it, but...
Yeah, it's not a great thing to do if you want kids to really love you, you know? Giving, giving snow days is a better thing than banning cellphone.
Yeah.
I, I, I will say to the reporters over here, your jobs are safe from, I think. But I appreciate the chance. And thanks to Mr. Priggy, and to the student government advisors, and especially the kids who were there at Mayo High School.
That was terrific. Thank you. Item 4.2 are board member committee updates. Does any board member have updates from any committees or any events to share? Director Marvin.
A few of us were able to attend a, uh, Overland Elementary School, to watch their teachers in action as they were carrying out some of the items on their skip, their school continuous improvement plan. And it was a real gift for us to see teachers and kids in action. In one classroom, kids were learning reading, and we were so impressed that there was a teacher at a table, reading with a few kids. Others were working independently. Some of them were working in small groups. They were on task, they were engaged, they were learning at different levels in different ways. We went to another room where kids were learning about waiting for their time to talk. I think it was a kindergarten class, wasn't it? Where they were in a circle, and they were...
It was first grade.
First grade, okay. And, and learning how to be a good community, how to share, really how to listen to each other. Another classroom, they were looking at a piece of art, classic art, and observing, really looking at it, really observing, and making inferences about what was going on in the painting. But it was just the, the best of education. And Mr. Ruffin was with us, and one thing I really enjoyed was the number of kids who asked Mr. Ruffin if he was a grandfather. Because I guess you just look old, I'm not sure. Or maybe just you have that kind of presence. But it was, it was a wonderful experience. And we've always loved having people come to the board meetings and talk to us about what they're doing in their schools. But it's a whole different level when you can go and see in action what it looks like, what the teachers sound like, with how the kids are reacting. And it was, it was inspirational.
Director Workman.
Well, everything that she said, but I'll add to it. And one of the things that particularly struck me was that in the design of the building, there are spaces for small groups to work. So, from a distance, I had the opportunity to watch about maybe four, or five, six kids with an educational support professional, who has been trained and taught how to work with these kids, to give them that more one-on-one support that they need. And this is one of the things that I, I'm hoping that the referendum will support, the continuation of this. And it is so valuable for our young people to have that.
And we'll be able to give a report on those skip visits once a month, as we have one scheduled for every month for the rest of the school year. So, thank you, board members. Any other committees or activities? Moving on to our consent agenda, items 5.1 through 5.6, would any board member like any item removed for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Item 6.1 is a focus topic, energy savings update and initial discussion of RPS environmental impact. Superintendent Pekel.
Thank you Chair Nathan. I'm going to, our Chief Administrative Officer, John Carlson, is coming up, and I'm going to give him a chance to introduce our colleagues from Synergistic. I will just say, at a time when we are seeing the, the second hurricane in a very brief period of time hit Florida, having taken an incredible toll the previous storm, and human and physical, human life and physical property, I'm reminded of the fact that when I do get out and talk to our Rochester Public Schools students, I'm regularly asked, what is Rochester Public Schools doing about climate change? And one answer is academically, we are rolling out a great new environmental science course that has a ton of great academic content in the high school curriculum. But another is what we're here to talk about tonight, how we are using our resources efficiently for the planet, which also has benefits for our budget. And so, we wanted to devote a bit of time to that process here. I'm sure all of our students are watching the school board meeting tonight to see. But seriously, it is a top concern for our young people. And so, I am glad that we have got some impressive results to share. So, John?
Great. Thank you Superintendent Pekel, and Chair Nathan, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be here tonight with three members from Synergistic. Lynn Pace is sitting there in the front row. I've got Dwayne Tompkins sitting next to me, and Adam Hanson to the left of him. This is the end of our sixth year of the program that we started in the 2018, 2019 school year. So we've completed six full years of the program. And we wanted to give an update on what we're doing to avoid energy costs at Rochester Public Schools. So I'm going to turn it over to Adam.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pekel, and the school board members. You already did the introduction, so I'm just going to jump right into it. So our total program savings over the first six years, like John mentioned, is 5.31 million. That's the same as 18.4% in overall savings. And I'll be mentioning the base year, which is compared to throughout these slides, which will be the one year prior to our partnership with the district. So our energy use avoidance. So you can see in the first performance year, we're at 33 million KBTUs. KBTUs is just the natural gas and electricity divided by the amount of square feet that's in the district. So, just a value that we can follow. You can see the increase in the performance year two. Then it plateaus a little bit, and that would be with the first few months of the pandemic. And then, the following year, we were running things a lot longer, kind of showing that we're not just all about savings. We want to make sure that we're running healthy buildings, running our flushes, make sure we're following ASHRAI and CDC standards, getting extra flushes in there, along with, you know, an increased ventilation, and increase, or increased number of MERV-13 filters. So... And then you can see the, the increase after that, going back up to about 40 million, and then where we are after the month of July of the summer, at 45 million. And then, with all of those added up, that's equivalent to running the schools, all the schools in the district for the next 1.2, 3 years, with what we've reduced in the first six. So, I'll show the, the next couple of slides are the ones that I really wanted to focus on here. The cost per unit impact, with the rising prices and everything, especially utilities with electricity and natural gas. We can see from the base year to the previous 12 months, the electricity has gone up 26%, and natural gas up 30%. And despite these rate increases, and then a 12% increase in our square footage since the base year, we have still cut our cost per square foot in the district, and reducing that by 30%. So even just over the last 12 months, we've been able to avoid paying the utility companies an extra one, a little over $1 million. So, even with those rate increases and everything, it's, it's a huge savings to have, not just us, but have the side of the facilities team, and custodians, and everybody, teachers, everyone that's involved, helping out and make these changes, and not pay the utility companies more than we want to. So... And the next one, so that was, the, the base year would be at 74.6, like I mentioned before, the KBTUs per square feet. Started off close to 75. And it kind of follows the same trend as a couple of our other graphs. You can see where it is reducing the first few years, kind of comes back up during COVID, when we're running things a little bit longer, and back down to the, the current state of 51.7. So that is a reduction of usage by 30.7%. So that's just in raw, raw usage there.
I want to just interject there. So when we were kicking the tires and considering energy initiatives back in 2017, early 2018, and we knew what our base year KBTU was at 74, and I had asked, like, how low could we get that? And they're like, well, you can probably get it into the 50s. And I'm like, there's no way you could go from 74 down to 50. And here we are, we got our energy use down to 51.7.
And then, as Dr. Pekel said recently too, about the environmental, environmental impact, obviously those other graphs are showing usage reduction, and utility cost reduction. But some of the environmental impact that it also has, that 217 million KBTU reduction, it's also like, the 25,000 metric tons of CO2 being avoided, or the 416,000 tree seedlings grown for 10 years, and then avoiding 27 million pounds of coal being burned. So, and there's a lot more that we can discuss too, or when we look forward to introducing some of this into any of our classes that we, we have a lot of things that we can do with, what would you say?
Paul Ranger.
What's that?
Paul Ranger.
Yeah. So, yeah, different programs that we can, that we can help out, if, if that's something that the district would like in the future.
So my name is Dwayne Tamkins, and I'm the client manager. And I have the privilege of working with Adam. He's definitely a rock star. So, the things he's been able to do alongside John, and, and thanks to the school board members, and it's just sure phenomenal. So, just imagine, I've got one question. What if every school district did exactly what you guys did here? Could you imagine the impact that could have on our world, on our nation, if they could just do exactly what you guys did? So, we happen to believe at Synergistic that what you're doing is so phenomenal, that we consider you to be best in class, right? So, along with being best in class, so we have a Synergistic Community $2,000 scholarship we want to award to you guys. The Synergic Community Scholarship is funded by Synergistic to recognize your organization's efforts for being best in class. Current levels of above-average energy reduction and savings can only be achieved through the superior support from staff and students to realize energy program goals. So, we do have a banner.
All right.
John, I'm going to give you, hand you this check, sir.
Oh, yeah.
Did I give it to the wrong person?
He's the right person.
Just asking.
That's fantastic.
Just display it. So, please know, and the weight of this award, and your energy-efficient measures, just being, got you.
Just holding up.
Just being responsible individuals, you know, the school community would like to know that we are being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. And that's exactly what we're doing, by being purposeful and intentional about how we operate our buildings on a day-to-day basis. So, we at Synergistic thank you, we applaud you, and we greatly appreciate your efforts, and we value the relationship that we have, and we hope that we can continue this relationship along into the future. So, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick add-on here, is to address some of the other things we're doing that are not specifically with Synergistic, but incorporated into the total program. We have been aggressive at applying for solar for schools grants, and getting solar panel projects installed on our buildings. So I've put up the six schools where we've been working. Two of them were done last summer in 2023, that's Dakota and Longfellow. And then in the summer of 2024, we put in panels at Bishop and Overland. And then, in process right now are Elton Hills and Hoover. I think over the MEA break, the Hoover panels will be craned up on top there. So, those are the grants that we've received so far. And there's a couple pictures of what it looks like at the top of Bishop and Overland right now. So, that concludes our presentation. We'd be open if there's any questions from anyone.
Director Cook.
Yeah, I love this topic. I, I'm just, I'm wondering if you could, you could take us back a little bit, because this is a six-year program, and I appreciate that a lot of it, and you've, you've called out the cooperation of staff and facilities, professionals throughout the district, in being diligent with the, the settings and so forth, and cooperating. But how much of this is infrastructure, and how much of it is like human behavior that we're trying to account for? Because I know there's been a, a few new schools, so the footprint of the district, physical footprint is not quite the same now as it was in 2017. But could you speak to that a little bit? But could you speak to that a little bit? How, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I think with the staff contribution, a lot of times it's during the summer months, the Thanksgiving breaks, winter breaks, having everyone do their part and set back things. But a lot of, a lot of the savings do come from managing schedules and making sure everything's following a schedule, shutting off at 5:00 PM, let's say. And that's what we do too. I mean, when I'm here, I'm out on Christmas Day morning, I'll go out. So before that, I don't think there's a lot of people that from facilities or custodians that would be out in the building. So this is something that maybe someone would have missed for six years if they was with no one in the building, right? So you could have something running. We have a thing called holiday mode programming. So it'll override everything in the school, all lights, all exhaust fans, all air handlers, boilers, chillers, whatever. And it'll turn them off for the day like it's a weekend. So without people being in the building like I am in the morning, I can find things, get them resolved as soon as possible. And also we we don't sell anything, so we work with whatever we have for existing equipment. So obviously the newer buildings, it's a lot easier, there's not a lot of opportunity. They've already done a lot of that. But we've also incorporated some of our programming measures. Let's say we're we're coming up on the heating season. We've incorporated some programming for boiler offsets, which pretty much reduces the heat supply overnight when no one's in the building, when no one's using it. So before that, it would still be running at 100% whether there's people in the building or not. So there is things that we obviously just use with existing equipment and hopefully that answered your question well enough.
Yeah, I'd say a lot of it is behavioral, but a lot of it is just being aware of when we're not here and not using our buildings and properly shutting everything down and then trusting but verifying. So we find many instances, I read Adam's reports where it says it's off and he's in there, he can hear it running. So then he tags it, he does a follow up and we put a fix to make sure that that system actually does turn off when it says it's supposed to turn off.
Well, I I just, I love that the the savings are about the same as the purchase on the Witten Wisdom curriculum that we got to see at Overland, you know, on an annual basis. So yeah, this is, this is just a great activity and thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Director Barlow.
Director Cook actually asked one of the, one of the three questions I have. So Adam, thank you, you've been with us from the beginning. And you've developed, you have delivered as you said, your company could, and thank you for that. I'm curious, Dwayne, you'd started to mention Power Ranger. Could you perhaps speak to that? Just so that we might know what is available and how we might be able to potentially incorporate that or make it available for, hand off to our classroom teachers and or potentially, and I know we have a privately owned utility RPU. So I don't, do you guys work with one another on any level? Or I'm not trying to get into the business operation or plan, but.
Right, let me speak to the Power Rangers first. And as a client manager, the long game is changing the culture, right? One of the best ways to change the culture is getting the school community involved. And in a previous program I happened to be a part of, we were able to implement a Power Rangers program. We allowed the students to become part of that. And the, our students are the future decision makers, right? They're the ones that are going to be in, coming up with policy, implementing policy down the road for our country. And so why not get them involved? Why not at an early age, get them to think about conservation, right? And the impact that's going to have. So Power Rangers program is just one program that you can utilize in order to get students involved at that level to start thinking about conservation early on.
And so thank you. And and I, because parents, households can benefit from having more of a heightened awareness beyond the monthly shock of our utility bill statement. But I'm excited to to see what the future holds and and thank you again. And you're the boss, aren't you?
I represent corporate office for for Synergistic. And as I was explaining to Mr. Carlson, besides being here to take photos, I was also getting tissue samples because we need plenty. I've been with the company about 20 years and have seen literally thousands of school systems over those 20 years. You really are best in class. You really should stop and ask yourself, what would this world be like if more school systems were like ours? Because you do have so much to be proud of. But my encouragement to you would be, don't ever relax. The price of liberty is eternal vigilance, so is the price of a well-executing energy conservation program. If you take our eye off of that, ever, it will end up sliding backwards. So keep that up. On behalf of everyone at Synergistic Corporate, I think we are so proud to have been allowed to partner with you these last six years. We do look forward to continuing to serve you for a long time.
Thank you for your words.
Any comments, board members? Well, I have a question. I love these numbers and I love the savings. I won't go into the story of when I was maybe looking at my mom in the audience, seven or eight, and I wrote, I wrote a letter to a office building that had gone up near an interstate because they had the lights on all night. So this was sort of my first foray into public policy. Many people turn the lights on. However, knowing that a lot of this is automated and knowing just the temperature fluctuations we have experienced in daily temperatures because of the weird climate we're having this year, how are we making sure that our people in the buildings are comfortable at the same time that we are trying to be as efficient in cost savings as possible?
So we aim to maybe, or get most of our savings from unoccupied times, from, you know, outside of the bell schedules and on the weekends and holidays. So it is automated in the, in the, in the schedules that we set up. But when there is a comfort complaint, I'm the main point of contact. So in previous years, maybe before we were here, it might have got submitted to a work order system to have one of the HVAC techs come out and look at it. Well, that could be, you know, three, four, or five days. So by having my email out there and cell phone and I'm available, you know, pretty much 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM for any scheduling adjustments. I also have direct contact with the controls company. So when there is an issue that I can't resolve right away, I can go right to Poppy and they can look into the programming. Or if it is something mechanical, we can get someone sent out there right away. So having them have my contact info directly, it, I think it takes a lot less time for things to get resolved.
It's been one of the best things through this program is having Adam and being the person running down the comfort complaints and actually taking them seriously. Not that we didn't take them seriously before, but we have a dedicated resource that's taking care of them and following up on them. And the tools and the sophistication he has, he'll put loggers in a classroom, he'll come back in a couple of days and you can read, you know, what's actually happening versus maybe what somebody might be feeling and show the real data of what's happening in that room.
That's great. Well, thank you, thank you for coming and and letting us know how we're doing. We appreciate it and we can, we look forward to our continued progress on those graphs. Item 7.1 is an action item, referendum defeat resolution. I will read the resolution and ask for a motion and second, and then we can continue with information and discussion. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby direct the superintendent to develop a 2025, 2026 general fund budget recommendation that includes the reductions outlined below if the Ignite Student Learning Referendum Plan is not passed by voters on November 5th, 2024. One, close three elementary schools to save $2,304,392. Closing three elementary schools would reduce the number of spaces available for students at the elementary level in RPS by approximately 10%. The schools that the administration recommends be closed if the referendum fails must be identified before January 1st, 2025. Schools would be recommended for closure based on the following criteria. The degree to which the school currently has excess capacity, the geographic location of the school relative to student residences, the impact that closing the school would have on students who attend other schools due to changes in attendance boundaries, age and physical condition of the school, and presence of special facilities in the school such as supports for special education students that would need to be replicated elsewhere if the school closed. Two, increase class sizes at all grade levels by three students to save $5,643,396. Financial savings from increases in class size result from the elimination of teaching positions as fewer teachers are assigned larger number of students. The reduction would save funds through the elimination of approximately 50 FTE teaching positions. Three, reduce central office positions and non-instructional positions at the school level to save $2,381,608. This reduction would save funds through the elimination of approximately 20 FTE positions, including positions in the superintendent's cabinet, central office administrators, principals, clerical staff, maintenance staff, and operations staff. Four, reduce programs and positions in the four investment areas included in the Ignite Student Learning Proposal to save $6,378,956. Those reductions would be made in the following categories of the Ignite Student Learning Plan. Positions that assist students who need more support to thrive. Reading specialists in curriculum, media specialists at elementary schools, community schools coordinator positions in programming, the CAPE Parent Education and Empowerment Program, the Launching Emerging Adults Program or LEAP, Project Search at Mayo Clinic, and driver's education for low-income students. Programs that challenge advanced students and enrich learning for all students. Advanced learning teachers and services, curriculum enhancements to deepen learning, project lead the way in middle schools, music positions in middle schools, staff and programs at Cory Hill Nature Center and Planetarium at Mayo High School. Services that strengthen student well-being and mental health, school counselor positions and mental health screening, and classes that prepare students for success in vocational and technical careers, including high school courses in auto mechanics, construction trades, accounting, and more. CTEC classes for computer science, law enforcement, agriculture, pharmacy, and more. PTEC pathways in nursing and information technology and post-secondary education and career planning software and supports. Be it further resolved, the School Board of Independent School District does hereby automatically rescind this resolution if the Ignite Student Learning Operating Referendum is approved on November 5th, 2023, 2024.
Move approval.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Board members, any discussion or questions?
I think, sorry.
Director Garcia.
One of the things in Dr. Pecel's town hall earlier, somebody had asked a very appropriate question essentially, which is why can't we be still more specific so we know precisely what it is that we are fighting for? And I know I had made a comment in one of the study sessions that I just sort of wanted to qualify the comment. Yes, I think we should be as specific as possible to offer people the opportunity to understand what it is we're asking of them. And I think the idea that, you know, just tell us which three elementary schools it's going to be so we know who to mobilize. I think I want to respond to that in saying, we are precisely fighting for the entirety of the district, not just three individual schools. Because regardless of what three individual schools would be chosen, it's going to have effects for everyone. And so yes, while I would like for there to be also more precise information, I appreciate the need to do the homework, as it was called, in identifying what that would be. And I also recognize, like, please don't allow this to become, let's pick and choose who's most important to us and then decide to fight for them. I think this referendum is so important because it's, it'll support all of our students and all of our educators. And so I I just wanted to to make that clear because I think some, some of my words were being used to fuel the need to push for something that we just, we don't have right now.
Director Cook.
Yeah, I would just echo your observations there, Director Garcia, that I I don't have a clear idea right now which schools. I don't think any of us does. I know for sure none of us have been talking about specific schools. But in my mind, if we did know, certainly we would share it. That would certainly be my strong instinct and really wouldn't be able to stop me. It's not a tactical decision. It's not about trying to mobilize or achieve a particular outcome. This is the best information we have as it exists today. That's what the public is getting. That's certainly how I see it. I did want to talk a little bit about class sizes. Because I think it's so important for the community, for the community to understand the impact of class sizes on the fortunes of our community broadly. Class sizes are so important for students in those classes because when you divide the teacher's attention between more students in the same classroom, it's kind of obvious that there's less attention for each individual student, less ability to meet the differentiated needs of the students in that classroom. It absolutely affects student outcomes. It is, it affects student learning. But what I think is sometimes lost on people and that I might have a somewhat unique perspective on this as someone who very intentionally selected Rochester as a place to live and a place to raise my family, is that class size really matters for the desirability of people to choose to live in Rochester. It is one of the very top things that every single parent looks at when they're deciding which community to decide to live in. And it's, it's kind of ingrained in you. It's not like, it's not like something that you're born with inherent in that way. But from the very first moment that every single parent goes through the process of deciding on what kind of childcare they're going to figure out for their, their little infant, it's immediately obvious that less little toddlers per childcare provider is a better equation for your child. And that, that just kind of becomes baked in. And it is absolutely the perspective that every single family that is deciding whether they want to live in Rochester or some other community is coming with when they're looking at the number of students in kindergarten. So as our community evaluates this proposal and thinks about what kind of future Rochester our community is interested in laying the foundation for, it's important to recognize that the outcome of this proposal will have a dramatic effect on the desirability of Rochester to be a place to raise a family, to be a place to be able to attract and retain employees. And so, you know, obviously there, there's a choice our community needs to weigh in on here. But I just want to make sure that that perspective is available for folks. And I support this resolution.
Director McLachlan.
So I wanted to touch on a couple of things and I hadn't planned to talk about class size, but Director Cook's discussion led me to think of something. In terms of class size, one of the things that I find important, in addition to what he said, is the fact that our strategic plan and the work we've been doing for the last couple of years related to implementing the REED Act and providing the multi-tiered systems of support, in my mind, is tied to class size in the sense that if there's more students in those classrooms, that's going to be less effective for our students because it's been, in my mind, designed for the class sizes we have now, providing those extra supports to our students. As those class sizes grow, the less benefit I could see from those things that we're doing with the students that I find are not only important, but I think are critical to our student success. I also wanted to focus primarily on the items in number four because I think that this is not only the largest portion of the dollars that we're looking at here in this, in this resolution in that each of these items I have a comment on. The first one about the positions that assist students who need more supports, I look at this both as, again, we give, we provide things like reading specialists and curriculum and media specialists because we are providing quality education to our students in our district. And I thought about this a little bit last night and, you know, our, our neighboring schools just aren't big enough sometimes to provide that level of quality that we're able to provide to our students because of the resources that we do have that I think we can pride ourselves in providing that quality education because we're able we can pride ourselves in providing that quality education because we're able to provide those extra supports. I also look at the other things on this list, the community schools, the CAPE Parent Education, all these other things. I view those as things that our district can do to make our district inclusive to all of our students. And again, in comparison, we don't see those in our smaller neighboring districts because they just aren't equipped to provide that level of quality and inclusiveness to all of our students. The things that challenge our advanced students and enrich our students, I look at those as things that also engage our students because those are the things that I see get the kids coming to school and enjoying their education. I also did a little bit of a deep dive last night into our planetarium at Mayo High School, just because I was curious. I learned that there are only eight planetariums in Minnesota and one of them is here at Mayo High School. And I looked at that a little bit thinking about, you know, if that had to close, you know, what impact that would not only have for our RPS students, but I also see the services we provide there as more of a regional service as well, that I saw things online about, you know, Cub Scout troops from EODA going to the planetarium. Those aren't things that they would, obviously, EODA doesn't have a planetarium, but they have easy access here to ours in our region and we can provide services like that to students beyond the borders of our district. And I think that that's something that we should be proud of, that we can do. In terms of supporting and strengthening the students' well-being and mental health, again, I think that goes directly to student engagement, that if students aren't healthy, both in their well-being and their mental health, they're not in their best place to be engaged in their education and be successful. I also very much support the concepts of the last point here about preparing students for success for, I think it's not only vocational and technical careers, but really the career preparation for all of our students. I've talked a lot in the community recently about the new Zello software and people are really excited to hear that. They're also, I think that part of the, and maybe it's one of the reasons that I ran for the board originally is that I didn't feel like this kind of information was out in the community and maybe it's because it's the type of things that has changed over time. But I do get a lot of questions from people I talk to, you know, are we offering shop class or auto mechanics or computer science or nursing or information technology? The answer is yes, we are, and that we need to continue. But I think, that's where I think that communication maybe has been lost over the years and that we're providing a lot of great programs, not only for those vocational and technical careers, but also preparing all of our students for their post-secondary path, whatever it is. I guess the only other thing I wanted to touch on here is it was a difficult vote to put this referendum on the ballot and it's been a little bit while since we had that vote, but I think it's important to recognize that. I think it's also important to recognize that in the communication about the referendum, that the district has already cut $21 million in recent years from the budget. If we hadn't done that, I think we would have a different approach or a different equation here to look at. But I've looked at that, both the motion to put the resolution on the ballot and this resolution that I think really clarifies for the community what will happen if this referendum is not passed. I think both of them go to the point that we wouldn't be doing this if we didn't need to. So I do plan to support this resolution.
Director Marv?
I support the resolution. That being said, I think it's important to say that should the referendum fail, we will still be ISD 535 and we will still offer to the best of our ability the highest quality of educational services, given the reality of the effect that a potential failure of the referendum might represent. It is my hope that, of course, it passes. That being said, this past weekend, I had two wonderful experiences and actually I'll begin with the most recent one, which occurred not on the weekend, but last night. First of all, expressing thankfulness to the PTSA that held a candidate forum and that candidate forum allowed members of PTSA and members of the community to come and query those of us who are either seeking reelection or election to the school board. And one of the members of the community shared with me the importance of services that strengthen student well-being and mental health without divulging any personal information she shared regarding her child. She just spoke to how it has been such a great value and benefit to her, her family, and how it would be a real tragedy if that were no longer available or greatly reduced. And I could sense her apprehension, concern, and at the same time appreciated her voiced And then the final thing comes from a family gathering that was held at granddad's house, my house. And the father of one of my grandchildren, like many dads, likes to boast how well his children are doing. So he said to my, one of my grandsons, you're still in the GATE program, aren't you? And my grandson said, oh, I can't say that because I'll get in trouble. So however the messaging is being carried out, we no longer do GATE, but it's Advanced Learning Services. And it created an opportunity for me then to share that, you know, that's one of the programs that are designed to challenge and enrich our learning for all students that is currently on the cutting block should the referendum fail. While dad appreciated the fact that his son is able to fully participate, what he was unaware of was with the potential passage, more students would be able to participate and have the access and opportunities that he sees his son realizing. And, and so for me, that just really spoke to one of many reasons why the referendum is so important and necessary. As has already been said, we're not looking just to get some more money, just to have more money, but these are necessary requests that I really believe our community and the majority of conversations I've had, I'm not going to say there have been hundreds of them, but there's been more than one or two of them which have occurred, where the public seemingly is indeed supportive of. There are those who have said quite honestly they're on a fixed income, they, they just don't have the capacity. And it's not that they're against our, what we want to do, they just don't have the capacity to, to afford it, if you will. And, and it's, I, I sense that concern and commitment, the frustration they have because as seniors, they also understand the importance of future generations and, and they understand what we do now has a lot to do with what will occur next. One of the presenters for Synergistic alluded to that. Our children will be the leaders of tomorrow and we need to fully equip them to be a leader that can certainly rise to the challenges of tomorrow. And so, again, I, I believe this referendum and many of the, the programs that we desire to continue and expand are well worth the, in our use of the word, sacrifice. It's not that I will enjoy seeing my tax base increase, but I accept that that's part of, being a part of a community that is dependent on tax bases to support services, not only for education, but for other governmental services, both city and county. So again, as I opened with, I fully support this referendum.
Director Marvin?
It's difficult for me to say I support this resolution just because, I do support the resolution, but because it is so difficult to look at the things that we, we could lose if the referendum doesn't pass. There aren't other communities, other organizations in, in Rochester that provide these kind of services, that allow kids in high school to get college credit, that saves their parents' money, that allows kids to get music education and art education, that allows parents to get the kind of education they know so they can help their kids through the registration process and applying for colleges and writing resumes, that allows Quarry Hill to operate without charging people to, to attend all the amazing programs they have there because we're involved in that too. We're involved in helping students who are challenged physically or, and now my vocabulary just evaporates, with other kind of challenges to have rich, fulfilling lives because we give them the opportunities through our school system to get job experience and learn how to make friends and learn how to, to operate in the community. We teach kids vocational schools that our community leaders say they need for these kids to, to become the work, workforce for them. Who's going to do that if we don't? And I just think, you know, you pay for those things you value and I am hoping that this community will step up and say, we value our children, we value our families. We know many families are saving money because their kids are in our schools, but everybody's kid should deserve to have the kind of education that we're providing now, the kind of choices that we offer now. They can't get it anywhere else. So that's what I have to say.
Director Workman?
I'm not going to repeat everything everybody else has already said mostly because I can't remember it all, but I'm looking at the bigger picture of going into the future with this, with the passage of this referendum. It will provide a financial stability to this district that we have not known for a very, very, very long time. I remember as a new teacher in the district in the middle 1970s, every single year was a crisis, mostly because I was near the bottom of the seniority list, but how many positions are we going to lose in music this year? How much of this are we going to lose? And then Chair Nathan alluded to this in a previous meeting. What do my kids have to look forward to? You know, my kids are in second grade right now. Is this program that's in high school, is that going to be there for them? And I think with the passage of this referendum, that this should give parents and other community members sort of a sigh of relief that they don't have to worry about this every single year. It's, it's emotionally draining. It's exhausting. It was exhausting when I was a teacher, it was exhausting when I was a parent, and it has been exhausting for just about every single year I have been on the sport. And so, I really hope that the community sees the value of what we provide for our students who are the future. Because if we don't, that's really going to have an impact on what that future looks like. So along with my other colleagues on the board, I will say, yes, I support this resolution for direction to the superintendent.
So I echo what Dr. Marvin said about, I wish I didn't have to vote yes for this resolution because like Director Workman, I have also been through the experience of budget cuts here in the district. And inevitably during this conversation that we've had with the community about the referendum and also during a school board election year, the topic of student outcomes bubbles to the surface. People want to talk about our outcomes, why they are what they are, and it's both academic and in, in our student mental health and wellness. And I am confident and pleased that we have a superintendent and a staff that is data-driven. And in all of the decisions we've made here at the table, student outcomes is at the priority of how we make our decisions. And I go back to the development of the strategic plan and my favorite graphic at the back of the room of our building blocks, and that everything that's in that strategic plan is about improving student outcomes. So if you're concerned about improving student outcomes, then you should be helping us do everything we can to continue implementing our strategic plan. And it was based on what the data told us our students need to be academically successful and what, what they need to support their mental health and their wellness. We spent the past two, now we're in the third year of implementing it. And to me, a failed referendum is the largest obstacle to implementing our strategic plan. And I look at the outcomes we have and I look at the outcomes we want to be and I cannot see us getting from A to B without the resources that we would have available to us if the referendum were to pass. And if the referendum does not pass, the cuts would be monumental. 19.4 million may just be an abstract number, but it is the largest single-year budget cut Rochester Public Schools has had since 1992. I don't have the data before 1992, somebody could probably get it. The second highest reduction was the 14 million we did two years ago. And I think about a kindergartner who entered RPS in 2022, who will graduate in 2035, and they will have experienced the results of over $30 million in budget cuts that we've had to do in our district. And I think about what they won't have that my kids had, who went through RPS from kindergarten through 12th grade. And I think about what a lot of my colleagues have said about specific programs and initiatives that we know benefit all of our students. So I would hope that our community would take advantage of the myriad of information we have available on our website, superintendent's public presentations, our virtual information sessions we have coming up, other information that other community groups are offering and really weigh their vote on this referendum and its impact, both on an individual student they may know in their family or their fund group, but also for the future of Rochester and the support it can bring for good outcomes for our whole community. Are there any other comments before we take a vote, Superintendent? All those in favor of the resolution say aye. Aye. All those opposed, the resolution passes. Item 8.1, Other Business. There were no questions submitted by board members before the meeting. Item 8.2, Our ABCD. The current version is available in this agenda for reference during every school board meeting. Are there any agenda items board members would like to raise for consideration for a future agenda? Hearing none or upcoming board meeting dates are October 15th at 5:30, a study session; October 22nd at 5:30, a special session on field trip fees, followed immediately by a regular meeting; November 12th at 5:30, a regular meeting; November 19th at 5:30, a special session for a public hearing formerly called the World's Best Workforce, but now called Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness. Immediately following that special session on the 19th of November will be a regular meeting. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:33 PM.